Guess the reason I'm here is, is Chief Dan got ahold of me and said, I think Laverne was up at Storm Lake for a meeting there and had some, seen some things up there from their recent disaster and has some questions. So I'm gonna go over some things for you real quick. And then if you have some questions, just let me know. As you guys all know, my world kinda resolves around preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. And in the preparedness part, I have to do plans yearly. We have like, they're called emergency support functions. There's fifteen of them. We're supposed to do three of them a year, update them and redo them. Send them in for Homeland Security's approval and stuff like that. As well as that, we have hazmat has to be done every year. So that's on the agenda there too. So that's part of the plan, preparation, preparedness and so forth. Then we kinda run into the roles of what maybe you guys would get into. As far as the city, obviously elected officials and stuff, the NIMS has to be up to date. FEMA requires first to be eligible for funding if we do have a declaration or something like that. To get the funding, you have to have your NIMS in place, which means we have a minimum of what NIMS classes everyone should be taking. Checked with Karen on that. I think we're pretty good on that. We're up to date. Anybody that has any questions on those, just feel free to get to me on them and we can go over that. As I talked about, I'll go into the emergency support function that we're kinda dealing with. If we'd have a disaster or something, we'd have like a storm come through or something like that. Is ESF three, it's public, Public Works and Debris Management. So I'm gonna spend most of my time right now on debris management. I won't take much time up tonight, but the bulk of it, I'm gonna talk about debris management. When I went to Greenfield last year, I got educated pretty well on debris management. That's huge when it comes to a disaster. And I'm not sure if that's what one of your big questions was on there. But if you guys don't know, debris management has to be, everything has to be separated out. Trees, debris, appliances, vehicles, everything like that. Everything has to have a certain place. Well, if we have a storm come through a big enough magnitude, yes, we have a recycling center and a landfill, but they can't take all that at one time. Okay? So then what you have to do is, is you have to have debris sites, temporary debris sites. What people don't realize is those sites, I just can't pick out a site and say, hey, I wanna put the trees here, debris there. DNR has to okay that. First of all, it can't be in a floodplain. Second of all, it can't be on a historical site. So to try to jump ahead of that game a little bit on the debris, I've been working with Mary Witry. We've been working with DNR out of Atlantic, that's where our field office is. And I've already got sites pre-planned and DNR has verbally given me the okay for these sites right now. That's a huge step. That was one of the wholebacks at Greenfield. We didn't get, they didn't have the sites to go to. So that's number one right there. To get those sites, DNR has to come out, inspect them, look at them. And then they have forms that we have to fill out, send in and have that paper trail before we can put debris on those sites. Well, I'm in the process of getting those forms right now. So as soon as I get the sites okayed, I will get the forms filled out. So we'll be one jump ahead of them. Cause we all got, the big thing here is we need to get life back to normal as soon as possible after a disaster. So that's one of my, that's one of my goals there. Like I said, some of the other things will be in place. I've got MOUs in place. We talked about it earlier. I was here eight months ago, nine months ago or something like that. I have, I've got MOUs. I've got all the schools in the city of Carroll. I got an MOU for shelters. Got the rec center. We got the library. I have transportation lined up with both Region 12 and the schools if we would need that. We've already, the county and the city basically already have the vet clinic for pets and animals. That's one thing nobody thought about down there. You know, that's a huge thing. Everybody's got pets and they're running all over. So I got an MOU I'm working on right now with Dr. Nelson out at the vet clinic. The MOUs can be, I mean, they're just, they just go on and on and on and on. Okay? So that, to me, that's one of the biggest things. If I can get that out of the way ahead of time, I'm ahead of the game right there. All right? So the other thing about our having a recycling center here, they take a lot of, they take a lot of items that you'd have to look. Otherwise you'd have to take somewhere else. We got quants here for vehicles, appliances, whatever. So, and I've spoken, I've spoken to them too. So it's, it's just goes on. I'll make a set here and talk to you guys for three hours on this if you wanted me to, but I'm sure you don't, I don't wanna bore you. But one of the other things we'll have, like EOC, Emergency Operations Center. If anybody doesn't know where that is, our primary emergency operations center would be the Swan Lake Contamination Center. And the secondary one is the fire station. I'd really stay, like to stay away from the fire station because there's enough things going on out there anyway. Okay? So the only issue with Swan Lake is it does not have power, generated power. So that's something I'd have to work on that. And we are working on that. So other than, I mean, I could talk about anything here. Do you have anything specific that?
Well, it was a red flag for me when I was up there. They had their fire chief and they had that basically tornado, but they didn't call it. Cause ninety percent of the town was out of electricity.
Right.
So they brought in these, you know, mid-American trucks or whatever to help, but they couldn't do anything because they didn't have, all their maps for the town was on digital.
Okay.
And they didn't have any power to get the digital up. So they had to wait until that power. They wasted a half a day because of that. They recommended that you have paper copies.
We do that. We have them. We've been, we've got those in place. Dan's worked on that with me. And Carrie promises making copies or made copies. So we've already got those. The goal when we get finished, he's got a copy now and I've got a copy. I'd like to have two copies, one of my vehicle, one of my office. He's gonna have one here and you're probably gonna have one here at the city. So for the county wise, I know this is city, but county, I've got the same thing and I'm working on one for each town in the county. So if I have them with me, well, my vehicle didn't get destroyed, I'll have it. Otherwise he'll have one for you guys. You should have one or we'll have multiple sets. So hopefully we're gonna be good to go on that. You might, Brad, you might even have some. So.
Their, their copies were, last time was in the nineties. They hadn't updated them. So they really couldn't do anything for a long time.
I understand. I, and you know, and I'm not gonna lie to you. I'll be going here thinking, oh, I'm sitting here and then I'll look over here and think, I am so far behind. I can't, you know, just things like that. You don't, you don't think about it till the disaster happens. So we just try to, I'm trying to cover every base I can as, as when I get to it. But anything where you've got questions on anything like that, let me know. But.
I have one, Jeff.
I'm hoping I can stay ahead of you. Yes.
So we assisted Spencer with some things. Do we have like a sister community that we know we can rely on certain things or are you at the last minute thinking maybe Spencer's got one? Like a generator or something like that? What, what's the?
There's a couple of ways on this, on the power wise. First of all, there's a aisle mutual aid agreement. We, we had an agreement with every, every county. Okay? The other part of that is through emergency management, through Homeland Security. I can request generators. I can request pumps. I can request rope, anything through Des Moines. It has to come from the emergency management. But if I'm gone, another county manager could do it for you. But I can get any of those resources. I would like to be able to have them here within, you know, ten hours. But, and then also there are placed out strategically in the, in the state. I'll just take, well, Calhoun County, for instance, the emergency management up there. He has, I believe he's got a light tower and he's got a twelve inch pump, like for flooding. And those are placed out, Homeland Security have them placed out all over the county, all over the state. We don't have any here in Carroll County. I'm gonna work on that. Obviously they don't wanna put pumps in Crawford, Calhoun and Carroll. But maybe I can get a light towers or maybe I can get a generator and then everybody else has stuff around us. Shelby County has pumps. I believe Altona County's got pumps. So as we need resources like that, they're just a call away. Yeah, we can get them. Within ten, ten, twelve hours, hopefully. And if it's a widespread event, hopefully we got enough that we can, everybody can get a little bit of it. I would like to tell you, you know, we can prepare, be prepared for everything, but we can try, do our best, but something's always gonna raise its head. On the, on the other side of that, as far as, as far as like I talked about, emergency operations center. If I have something happen here in Carroll, most likely, obviously I'll have to have a PIO for sure. I have a person in mind. I haven't talked to him yet. He's not sitting too far from me right now. But I have a person in mind I'm gonna use as a PIO for the city of Carroll. And in that emergency operations center, I would need one or two or three of you in there at all times. As well as maybe city attorney, county attorney, things like that. So I try to have in, in the center, what I try to do is have whether, so if it's a fire, definitely gonna have Dan or somebody from the fire department in seniority in there to make decisions for me. So they always, they preach every, every class I go to, you know, disasters is a whole, whole community approach. It takes everybody on them. You make relationships. I'm trying to make these relationships right now because believe me, I don't wanna, I don't want the disaster to happen tomorrow and then trying to go out and talk to somebody. I wanna have a place ahead of time. So any, any concerns you have, yeah, let me know. You know, we've got a, this, this, this debris, ESF debris management plan I have. It's about sixty pages long. And anytime you wanna sit down and talk about it, I'm, I'm, I'm game. And I do have some things in there. I wanna maybe talk to Eric or somebody about one of these days, ask some ideas. So, but I won't bring them up tonight. That kinda answered anything you had or if you guys got questions, email me, call me. You know where I'm at. So, all right?
Good deal.
Thanks, Jeff. You're one of those jobs that nobody wants to have to use, but you're the most important person around when it comes to.
I don't feel important, but I thrive on excitement.
You will be if it ever happens. So.
I'm kind of a junkie excitement, so I, I.
All right.
I thrive on it. So.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes of the May twenty seventh, twenty five meeting. Approval of bills and claims, licenses and permits, including renewal of special class C retail alcohol license for Pizza Hut. Retail of class C retail alcohol license for Brothers on Main. Retail of class B retail alcohol license for Drise Oil Company Incorporated and cigarette permits. Also includes acceptance of tobacco settlement agreements and appointments to committees and commissions and boards for the city. And the three I will mention is Gene Ludwig is a reappointment Parks and Rec and Cultural Advisory Board. Sheila Dentlinger is a reappointment to Parks, Recreation and Culture Advisory Board. And Colin Mowery is new and the Parks Recreation and Culture Advisory Board for a three-year term each. If there are any, no questions on the minutes, I'd like, or the consent agenda, I'd like a approval by Tom. And Jason Second, roll call please.
Shrek, yes. Dirk?
Yes.
Borneo?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And are there any oral requests from the public here today wishing to address the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Barry Bruner. I represent the Carroll Athletic Association, which is a nonprofit involved with Merchants Park. And with me tonight is a fine gentleman, Chris Whitaker, who is the manager and the brains behind the Carroll Merchants Baseball Club. A project that I thought had no chance of ever making it big and it's been a huge success and it's all because of his, well, not really. Okay, never mind. He works hard at it. Anyway, thank you. Now just take a second. We need to be on the agenda for next week. If we could, we were, things came up and we didn't get on today's agenda, otherwise I'd be speaking something else. But several weeks ago, I texted all of you about the possibility of dedicating the field at Merchants Park. Scott Parcher, of course, we lost after forty-four years of service to this city. Unbelievable service to the community. The parks, you name it. Scott was just an item, just a, just a rare, rare item, very private man. He'd, he's probably looking down on us now and I, I may hear some thunder out in the backyard tonight. But we'd love to ask the city council in two weeks to give us the authority to name the field. Not, it would be Scott Parcher Field at Historic Merchants Park. It would, we're not changing the name of the park or anything else. That historic aspect will stay the same. But the forty, the forty years of Scott being in that field, his work, and, and somebody described it. Scott made the baseball diamond sparkle and he truly did. And he was the reason the State of Iowa Athletic Association came and junior college tournaments came. And college teams came in the early nineties. Scott was the guy. And I think we have a lot of great people working for the cities and the counties and so forth. But he proved himself above and beyond his work because truly, if you ever drove around that stadium for the last forty years, it could be Sunday night, Monday morning, whatever, you'd see Scott down there working on his free time. So anyway, we would like to ask to be put on the agenda for next week or two weeks.
Next week.
And ask you to consider that. If you need any information, we can get you any information about Scott's work for the city and so forth. And of course, the city can get you the basics too. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Someone else? Did you have, okay, come on up and say.
Hi, everybody. Hi. My name is Jared Corson. I've been a resident for right around ten years here in Carroll. Reason I'm here today is to express a safety concern and hopefully get something handled. I live on the intersection of Eleventh Street and Vine Street in Carroll. For those of you that don't know that, that's right across from the Carroll pool. My concern is on a basic daily occurrence, I'm seeing people coming northbound out of like the Merchant Park area. They were just talking about the pool, the track and field area. A lot of times it's in the evening, but I'm seeing cars coming through that intersection at twenty thirty, forty mile an hour sometimes. What I would like to hopefully see happen is get a stop sign put in. It's a four-way intersection. It's unregulated on all four sides. I think on the Eleventh Avenue street side, obviously that's your main traffic area. I think where it would be beneficial would be on the south side. I also think for the traffic that's coming down the hill on the north side heading south, it would also actually benefit just because it's somewhat of a blind spot there also to be considered. But my main concern is safety. In the last couple of weeks, I've seen a mother pushing a stroller just about get hit by a car. There's kids on mopeds. There's kid on bicycles. There's between the storm gates there, the trees, cars parked during the pool hours. It's just hard to see when you're coming up through there, especially if you're doing twenty, thirty, forty mile an hour. It's impossible to really have a good sharp line, keep track of that stuff. Anybody that does common sense obviously likes to stop there. I mean, ninety-five percent of our people I think are doing an adequate job, at least slowing down and doing a rolling stop through there. But because there's no sign at all, I think it's a huge liability for our city and for the safety of our people here.
All right.
Yeah.
No.
Well, not, not. So Vine's a T-intersection technically because it's a parking lot to the south, but there's no, there's no stop signs at that.
I assume there's no stop signs because it's a T. There still should be, could be a stop sign. So we can put a stop sign in next right.
At the parking lot.
You guys make the ordinance.
Oh, maybe I'm just, I'm just, he's a studio master, I think it's called, right?
And I had talked to Tom about it a little bit. Just, I didn't know the procedure obviously to come here. I just wanted to do the right thing. See if I needed anything like video or pictures, anything like that. One of the main concerns, I guess, as far as an argument against it, I think, and that they're kinda talking about is, is it a street? Is it a lane? Is it a parking lot? Obviously I understand that that's kind of a mixed bag. When you consider that area though, when you start to look at it, over at the DMAT parking lot area, when you're coming past the track and field, past the DMAT campus, there's a stop sign there, which that would arguably be the same thing. Also on the south side of that, where the Merchants Park, where the rec center is, there's also a stop sign there. So, and that's at the storm gate. So I guess I don't understand if a stop sign can be at both of those locations. Why it wouldn't be able to be on the north side there where I'm talking about the pool.
Okay. Thanks. You made a good point.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Better look, take these off or I might miss somebody.
Do you use right ordinance or are you? We don't think we need one because it's already, parking lots should already be covered by ordinances for stopping anyone. There's no signs there. So I think we could. Or at least we're northbound. If you're looking for southbound, we're gonna need an ordinance for that one.
Okay.
If there was, I, I haven't walked by, I haven't walked by there today just so I can see and there's, there's no sign of an old pole there or anything like that. Cause I thought maybe with the storms, maybe one of those storm gates knocked it down or something, but. There's, there's room for one, as far as I can tell, but there's no old poster or anything like that. I'll put it that way.
Okay. It'll be checked into, but thank you very much. Uh, now we will move to actual ordinances. And the first one is water rates, third reading and Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a time for consideration of the third reading for the ordinance amending water rates. As you recall, this is a proposed seven and a half percent increase in the water rates. Primarily driven by the need to finance the Northwest Pressure Zone Project. It's one step in what would likely be multiple steps needed to meet that financing obligation. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of approval of the third reading of the ordinance and adoption of the ordinance.
So I have a question. I've got a couple complaints, kind of on Kyle's thing, about the, the cost of the increase. And I kinda looked back to a December meeting. We have nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars somewhat sitting out there. And I think that we can utilize this money towards that to drive that cost down and it'll give taxpayers savings at the end of it. It was originally shot down, but I'll make a motion to take that nine hundred and seventy-four, where was it at, Aaron?
Sewer, sewer revenue.
The sewer revenue and apply that to this to ultimately drive down those water costs for our tax bank constituents. And then I guess we probably have to go back and reconsider it one more time to two weeks from now to see how that affects that rate.
We can't put that on.
What do you usually have for a reserve balance in that fund? What do you try to maintain?
Trying to maintain a half million dollar balance in that water utility fund.
Okay. We're talking about whether we can take action on your motion, which David says we cannot at this time, at least this evening. It's not on the agenda. So we can't do it that way.
No, my motion is to wait on this third reading till we get it on the agenda and then we can vote on it.
Okay. That we could take. Is there a second?
So how much are you asking on that nine hundred?
All of it.
But don't you need a, a balance of some sort, you're saying?
Those are the funds that we transferred to the sewer plant in December.
So you're saying.
There, there isn't, tho- those funds were, were federal dollars that we had to transfer in to keep it under contract is what those funds are.
Okay. If, describe your motion again. Let's hear what.
My motion is to delay this until the following, following meeting to take the nine hundred and seventy-four, whatever thousand dollars.
To consider taking.
Consider taking it and moving that towards this project to ultimately offset the increase for our taxpayers.
I'll second.
Well, that's fine. I think we need to know the, the percentage of what that'll be then.
So we'll have that for next.
You'll have that calculation for us. Yeah.
Well, he's giving us direction on what to look for. The actual motion is to postpone this discussion until the next council meeting.
Yeah, on the grounds of that's what we're, I guess.
I don't think we'd need the grounds really, but it's understood then by everyone that that's why. Okay. There's a motion and a second.
I have a question for Randy. Randy, I'm looking at the Water Utility Fund document you have, you included. And you have it broken down showing, I mean, it's very detailed, showing the revenue of, from the increases. But then also the multi, many uses, the expenditures are going to go for many projects. So what happens to those? If I'm understanding what you have here, you know, for over the five year, from twenty-four, twenty-five through twenty-eight, twenty-nine, you have the Northwest Water Pressure Zone, roof replacements, water main replacements, Twelfth Street reconstruction, South Gate Road reconstruction, and this is all built into our capital improvement plan. So the rates are going mainly to the Northwest Water Pressure to solve that problem. But the rates are also contributing to all these other projects. Or am I wrong? Am I reading your document incorrectly where you have them know it revenue, then expenditure? And they're all listed. Anyway, I don't know if I'm making sense to you or not, but looking at that, it seems like the, the, the rate increases will go to multiple projects beyond the Northwest Water Project.
Well, the Northwest Pressure Zone Project is what's driving the rate increase.
Right. I understand that.
And that would be the majority of it. In the case where you infuse additional cash into a project like the Northwest Pressure Zone Project, then the, in effect, the, the bond issue would be less. And that would result in a lower annual bond payment.
Sure.
Over twenty years. And that's where the savings on the rate structure would come in.
Really go over the first on this. In one moment, we talked about this rate increase just being the Northwest Water Pressure. And then I tried to take this money that's just sitting there and put it, and now it's like spread out like, like where are we at? Is this rate increase because of the Northwest Pressure thing that we've talked about all the way up to this point? Or is this other, like I agree with you. Where, like where are we at?
Well, and we've had this document since the beginning of the first two readings. So we've all been exposed to all this information and the comparison of rates, et cetera. So I, I also wanna add, a few people talked to me, not a huge number, but they were favorable toward raising rates since they had not been raised since two thousand seventeen because they don't want their tax dollars going to service debt because they see that as not tangible. So they are not opposed to the rate, the people who talked to me are not opposed.
The bottom line from you is that the majority. The bottom line from you is that the majority of this is going toward the water project in the Northwest?
Yes. The, now, the, the project for the Northwest Pressure Zone is nearly a five-point-eight million dollar project. If that were not on the table, there would be no recommendation for a rate increase. That rate increase is financing the bond payment for the Northwest Pressure Zone Project. And if you infused cash into that, right now, the bond is estimated at almost four million dollars. If you reduce that by nine hundred and seventy-four thousand or whatever the number is, the annual bond payment's going to be lower if you maintain the same term. So that's kind of where you're at on it. You know, you buy down the bond with cash, if that's your decision, then it changes the need for, to generate cash from the rate increase. So it'd be lower.
Okay. Any other questions? Can you somehow, this is for us right now, before we vote, just to make sure we?
It's a motion to postpone this discussion till the next meeting.
Just, what do you need, sir? You have something to say about this, or?
I'd like to, yes.
What? Come up for a couple minutes here, if you.
Won't take that long.
What?
Won't take that long.
Good.
We're gonna be called.
Yeah.
January North Adams.
Thanks.
So for decades now, the water fund has been financing debt for the city. A million dollars at a time has been, been taken out of there numerous occasions. My concern is, has it ever been repaid? And is it currently on the level? I mean, is, is all that funding that was used elsewhere back in the water fund at this moment?
Okay. That'd be an unrelated question to this, but if you can provide him an answer later, I guess.
No, the bottom line is yes.
Is yes, is what?
It has been, there has, the water fund has loaned money to construct the, the downtown improvements, the streetscape improvements. And each loan was set up to be repaid with interest, and most of them over a period of less than three years. And they are, it is now up to date. The, the revenue from the tax increment financing in the urban renewal area has repaid the water fund, those series of loans that was made.
All right. Go ahead then, Laura. How do you have this as, as a motion?
A motion to postpone this discussion of the water rate ordinance.
Okay. And that was by Jason, and seconded by JJ. A roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ford Narrow?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Very, very good. Next is Carroll City Ordinance, Chapter Forty-One, subsection thirteen Amendment, fireworks, first reading, and Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. At the most recent legislative session that just ended a month or so ago, the Senate and the governor signed into law, sent a file three zero three. What this file does is it restricts cities from prohibiting the use of fireworks on July third, July fourth, and December thirty-first. Our current city ordinance reads, and it would be violation of the state code, the way our ordinance, our current ordinance reads. So what I've done is I've prepared the ordinance to make the change to match the state code allowing fireworks on July third, July fourth, and December thirty-first, to match that new Iowa code change that'll take effect July first. So we're getting it now because this does take effect in a month, and I know we're gonna be dealing with this issue quite heavily starting pretty soon.
So this is just matched to, to match the state code?
Correct. Well, it doesn't match the state code, it matches the requirements for those three days.
Okay.
Because we're still, we can still restrict any other day but those three.
In the ordinance, it doesn't have the timeframes?
It doesn't. So that resorts back to the state code, which would be on July third, between nine and ten P M. Fireworks would be allowed July fourth, between nine and eleven P M.
Nine A M.
Nine A M., yes, nine A M. to eleven P M. And then on December thirty-first, it reads nine A M. to twelve thirty A M. on the immediate following day. But the state ordinance didn't say January first. So I think we can still restrict them, beginning at midnight for that half hour.
It's gonna be up at that time.
Any questions first?
I guess the, the main thing is, do you, how many, do you want to waive all three, since it's a matches the state code and be done with it, or would you like it to come back to the next meeting?
I think we waive all three. We don't have a choice. We have to match. So I'll make a motion.
By then, and then it would be too late to.
Waive all three.
Or, well, make a motion to accept the first reading and then waive the next two.
Then waive all three. Yes.
That's the motion. And JJ, you made it?
Yes.
Okay. And Tom will second it. Roll call vote, please.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ford Narrow?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay.
Need a motion to adopt.
Right. And now we'll need the motion to adopt of, by JJ, and Tom again, seconded. Roll call, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Ford Narrow?
Tom?
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Carroll City Ordinance, Chapter One Twenty-Two Amendment, Mobile Food Vehicles, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Transient Merchants, first reading, and Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this ordinance, I was asked to review mostly to deal with mobile food vehicles. As I started looking around the state and digging into ordinances, I know how much of a pain it can be to local residents when we have door-to-door sales. And so Pella has an ordinance that's very similar to this one that we're, that I'm showing to you tonight. But what this will do is it defines the mobile food vehicles better than our current ordinance does. It does not allow residential neighborhoods to have door-to-door sales. And it more, more clearly defines the exemptions for the, for the permits than what we currently have in our ordinance. So I did provide two of them. The first one has fees associated with it. The other one does not have fees, kind of your guys' option. The, the idea with the no-fee one was that the mobile food vendors and solicitors are still paying sales tax. They're paying vehicle tax on their trailers. And this is just another tax that we could or could not require to, to make people pay. So it's kind of your guys' option, how you want to move forward with that. We're not restricting any sales in neighborhoods by nonprofits, by the fire department, schools, those types of organizations. That's all written into the exceptions, that people still do door-to-door sales in residential neighborhoods. But I, we, when we get people that are doing door-to-door sales, even if they do have a permit, we still get quite a few calls about them being in neighborhoods of suspicious, or an annoyance, or kind of pushy on their sales tactics. So.
So Brad went before the, as it is now, if someone wanted to park a truck for ten days, let's say, what would it cost them?
It's twenty-five dollars a day. There's a restriction on the number of days in a row that you can sell, though. I don't recall off the top of my head what that is, but I don't, I know ten days is too long. And the current ordinance allows you to go no more than three days at one location. So if you're set up at.
That would continue, though, right?
What's that?
The three-day restriction is going to continue in the new, that doesn't, that doesn't change?
No, that's in the new ord, that'll be in the new ordinance. So for an example, it'd be, you see them at, you see food trucks at O'Reilly's quite a bit. That's where we get our permit requests from. They can set up three days at O'Reilly's and then move to Taco John's and do three more days, and then, so you couldn't be at O'Reilly's permanently with a food truck. We're trying to keep them from just taking up house in one, one parking lot.
Okay.
And they can't, there's no sales allowed on any city property. So parks, the Westgate Mall parking lot would be not, would not be allowed, or any, any right-of-way would not be allowed either.
So I want to describe an incident to you, and then you tell me what would happen in today's, in the new world. Because I get this every once in a while, because of the proximity of my business. I'll get someone coming in with a suitcase full of jewelry, all right? Costume jewelry, all for sale for five dollars, or whatever, you know? They barely get it open, and I say, do you have a permit to sell in the city? They don't, then that's my way. To get them to not compete with all my jewelry I sell.
It would still be the same, same permit required to do door-to-door sales at, at the pharmacy or any other business.
Because that's not uncommon for that to happen.
No, it is not.
Right. And that doesn't change at all?
Nope.
Are there any other questions? We need to decide if it's which of the two we would want to vote on first. So did, Carolyn, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to, I checked several towns, too, and they're all over the map with fees, for different reasons, charge fees for a multitude of reasons. And I, and looking at your response, your responsibilities, or whomever you delegate the responsibility to, you go into the application for permit, investigation of the applicant, and then there's some monitoring to make sure they're not out in the streets and so on. I don't have a number in mind, but here's my thought, after looking at other towns that seem reasonable to me, that I think because of the extra time that it will take you or someone else to do the administrative work, I think some type of reasonable fee should be required. And I, I remember the gentleman that came and talked to us in, in the cost. I looked at the Department of Inspections, Appeals, and Licensing, and their, their cost to the state to get the license is two hundred and fifty dollars. So anyway, I just think covering that time, it's valuable, it's short. I think we should be compensated for the time that's spent doing that. I, one town, I don't know, one town caught my eye, Nevada, if I can find it here. They, hold on. They charge a fee of, I think it was twenty-five dollars for, oh, here it is. Nevada charges twenty-five dollars, or pardon me, Grinnell, twenty-five dollars per thirty days of operation, or two hundred and fifty dollars, the same as the state, for the duration of a year. Because their license times out in a year for the state, it does for the city. So I just think food for thought, what others think of charging something that would be reasonable, we want to be welcoming. But again, for the reasons I gave, I think we should have some type of fee. Or maybe everybody's thinking, keep them as it is.
Couldn't agree with you more. Can we make a motion to approve the one with the fee?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the one with the fee.
I just want to make sure that they're, they're not getting a benefit compared to somebody that owns a business like Tom's business. You know, they're not getting an extra benefit. It needs to be equal to what the businesses are.
That, that's why we would add the fee, is to prevent an out of, a non.
Yeah, I get it. But we just need to make sure.
That's probably the stronger argument to protect our.
Well, it's fair to, more fair, equitable to other.
Yeah.
Right.
But I.
Brick and mortar buildings, if you will.
Right, right.
Okay.
For both reasons.
Okay. The motion was to.
Jason, and then JJ, too.
Jason made the motion to approve the one with fees, and JJ seconded it.
I'm assuming you mean the first reading.
Yeah, first reading.
Does there have to be a fee dollar amount associated with that, or just say fee? It's in, it's in the ordinance. They, it has a three hundred dollar annual fee, a twenty-five dollar daily.
And one fifty for a month. So.
We like them to do annually, because it's easier to keep track of.
Okay. All right. There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Ford Narrow?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay. All right, moving on to resolutions. The first one's fiscal year twenty twenty-six, property liability and workers' compensation insurance renewal, and Laura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is a time we have received our renewal information for our fiscal twenty-six insurance information. Just to refresh your memory, we do work with ICAF, or Iowa Community Insurance Pool, for our property liability coverage, and then we work with IMWCA for our workers' comp insurance coverage. And then our local agent is Mid-Iowa Insurance and Real Estate. We do have Josh Axman here with Mid-Iowa, if you have any questions. To summarize, our total overall cost, as you saw in the comparison information, was, it was down almost thirty-four thousand dollars from last year. The main reason for the decrease was due to the premiums for our worker comp coverage. Our mod factor dropped from a one point two four to a point eight eight. And the mod, to refresh your memory, has a lot to do with our, the number of claims over a three-year period, preceding three-year period. And so we've had these last three years compared to the periods before that were significantly better. So the coverage for the other part of the insurance for the liability and property did see an increase, as you can imagine, to more sort of keep up with inflationary factors and things like that. So we did ask Mid-Iowa to seek another quote from EMC, as they are about the only other company in the state of Iowa that covers municipalities, and they declined to give a quote to the city again this year. If there are any questions, like I said, Josh Axman with Mid-Iowa is here, otherwise we're looking for approval from council to enter into the contracts for our insurance coverage for next year, with premiums to be paid on July first.
Josh, what was the reason that EMC declined to give the city a quote?
The city has open liability claims currently, and as of the renewal date, if, basically, if you switch companies, coverage and payments cease at that time. So basically, they, they didn't think it's worth it quoting it, because it's, it's not, with open liability claims, I mean, the, the dollar amounts can be, are kind of limitless, basically. So they, they don't want to be on the hook for current open claims that, that, that we currently have.
So if we switch, they would be liable for things that have not been decided yet?
Or the city would be, be liable for, they, I mean, they, they probably, probably wouldn't, they wouldn't probably pick up the liability coverage unless they, I don't know why they would do that, but.
What's the ti, what's the timeline of closing out these ones that we have open so that we can get a competitive bid? Seems to me like there's no initiative for you to close these out if you're not getting bid at all.
I, I, I have nothing to do with closing out the claims, but the, and, and I, I can look into it, and I would invite.
I assume the company does, right?
They, sure, sure, they do, yeah. And if, yeah, we, and we can definitely, we can't talk about any specific claims in a public forum, but if you guys have any, you know, questions about specific claims that are, that are open right now, please, I would invite anybody to, to stop by our office, and we can, we can kind of go through any of the claims. Like I said, we can't discuss in the public forum, just because there's privacy.
I'm not asking about a specific one, but this is second year in a row that we had open claims, and we haven't been able to receive a competitive bid.
Right.
What is the incentive for you to close out these bids?
But he has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
It's, it's legal.
It, it goes through the court, it goes through the court system. It, it's a lot easier for, sorry, sorry, Aaron.
No, that's fine.
It's, it's easier for property, to get a, get a, say it for property claims, because, you know, you have a hail damage on a roof or something like that. You know, it's a set dollar amount, and there's a, there's a timeline. But for, for liability issues, they're legal issues, and a lot of times, we have no idea. You know, they can be open for six months, or they can be open for three years. You know, you just, you just never know how, you know, how they're, they're going to go through the court system, so.
But the other one should be fairly simple.
What's that?
Like a shelter house wording down should be done and resolved pretty fast.
You, yeah, you would, you would think, yes.
Asking for a friend.
We will, we're actually going to have a closed session on the next meeting regarding one of those issues that we'll have an attorney here to talk to us about.
Yeah.
That's what I was, I was trying to say it nicer than.
Than Captain Ruth?
Yes, no, that has been frustrating, no. I, I agree.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the property liability and workers' compensation insurance coverage as presented by Tom? There a second?
Second.
By Laverne? Roll call vote, please.
Atherton? Dirk?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Ford Narrow?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, we'll move on to the next resolution, which is fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, salary resolution, and Aaron.
Laura, do you want to take this, or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got it in front of you, or no? I could.
Sorry, I didn't have Laura on this one, so.
That's all right. What you have in front of you is our, our salary resolution for this next fiscal year. The negotiated public works contract was four percent, and the police contract was four point seven five percent. Following past practice, the nonrepresented full-time positions were adjusted by the same percentage increase as the full-time public works union. Police command staff were adjusted by a schedule that was put in place in the past. The, the resolution you have in front of you is the top of the salary range. Some employees that have not been here for five years-ish are not at the top of the salary range, but all salaries have been adjusted per four percent or the negotiated co, union contracts.
Questions? All right, look for a motion to approve the resolution setting top of pay or ranges of pay for city employees beginning July first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
By Carolyn?
Second.
And Tom, seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Ford Narrow?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek? Shrek.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Dirk.
Yes.
Atherton.
Yes.
All right, we have, uh, no reports this evening. Committee reports for information only, comments from the mayor, yes, I have a couple of them. First of all, on Tuesday, June third, I visited with our city manager, Aaron Koiker, and, uh, regarding a, uh, a review of, of his perform, of what I would call a performance review, and I will just say that that was a, a pos- I found it to be a positive review in, uh, in his favor. And, and the second thing, I wanted to th- thank the, uh, the, uh, historical society for all the work they did this past weekend, um, presenting all of their things that they have. I noticed that, uh, the, one of the, uh, television stations this morning had shown some interesting things that Jefferson has, while we also have some very interesting things in our, uh, available for people to, to take a look at. And if, if you didn't take advantage of this weekend, looking at some of these things, in, in particular, the, uh, the museum, in the Carnegie, the old Carnegie Library, that's especially interesting, and then the farm equipment out at Swan Lake. But thank you all for, for, uh, being a part of that. I know Carolyn, you're a big part of that, and, uh, Vicky as well, and I saw Vicky out there, so. Okay, thank you all, I have no other comments. And how about from the, uh, city council? Or from the city manager?
I don't have anything tonight.
I will accept that. And, okay, Tom, Tom made a motion, uh, Jason seconded it, roll call, please.
Ford Naro.
Yes.
Atherton.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Dirk.
Yes.
Shrek.
Yes.
Seaman. Yes.
Okay, thank you.